Okay, good morning. It's ten AM. Ask you to please rise if you're able for the paying per and pledge allegiance before we convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting. Early Father, today is the day we set aside as recognized as Armed Forces Day. President Truman was instrumental in establishing a day for citizens to join together to thank our military members for their service and support of our country and protection of our freedoms. We're thankful for their lives and their dedication to our country. We ask for your protection over them. Father, also today we'll recognize and honor members of our medical services. These members of the medical field include our first responders, paramedics, technicians, dispatchers, firefighters, police, doctors and nurses. They're the ones on the front lines every day protecting, treating and caring for our communities. They are the ones to run to an emergency at a moment's notice to assist their fellow man. They dedicate their lives to serving others. We thank you for giving them strength each day and may your hand be over them for their continued safety. Father, we also honor and remember our law enforcement during this National Police Week. Proclaimed in nineteen sixty-two by President John F. Kennedy as Peace Officers Remoil Day and National Police Week to remember and honor law enforcement officers for their service and dedication. We remember the fallen officers who encountered evil on that fateful day. They died protecting our communities. They left behind loved ones that had to learn how to cope and survive without them. We thank you for those brave souls and may we always honor and remember them. Lord, come for those families and meet their needs and we ask for your protection over each officer. Now, your, may your hand be over our meeting this day as we ask these things in your name. Amen. At this time, we will convene our Commissioners' Public Meeting and we'll ask for approval in minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make love.
I'll say.
All fair side?
Hi.
Hey, do we have any public comment on agenda items only at this time? Any from the audience? Any online?
None online.
And moving on with proclamations today, uh, we have one from Commissioner Messina first. We have three today and he'll be the first one to lead off.
All right, mine is kind of long, but it's important, so. Whereas, mental health includes our emotional, psychological and social well-being. It affects people in our communities, how we think, feel and act. It also affects how we handle stress, relate to others and make choices. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control and National Institute of Mental Health, among other organizations, report that fifty percent of all lifetime mental health disorders commonly begin at the age of fourteen in adolescence and then seventy-five percent by the age of twenty-four. Suicide is the second leading cause of death among people aged ten to fourteen and the third leading cause of death among those aged fifteen to twenty-four in the United States. Whereas, a lack of mental health awareness leads devastating impacts on the well-being of individuals and communities. Suicide is the twelfth leading cause of death overall in the U.S. And forty-six percent of people who die by suicide had a diagnosed mental health condition. Whereas, mental health illness, unlike physical illness, cannot be diagnosed with a blood test. While each mental health condition has a unique set of symptoms, these symptoms often overlap between different conditions, which makes exact diagnosing difficult. Treatment for mental health illness is involuntary and takes time and persistence to see results. And often, an individual suffering with a mental illness is not even aware they are ill. Whereas, early warning signs often emerge at the onset or worsening of mental health symptoms. And these warning signs include thoughts, feelings or behaviors that significantly impair the day-to-day functioning. And early identification and treatment can make a profound difference in successful management of mental health illness and recovery. Whereas, people with mental health illness are overrepresented in our nation's jails and prisons. And about two in five people who are incarcerated have a history of mental health, of mental illness. And seventy percent of youth in juvenile justice systems have a diagnosable mental health condition. And approximately three in five people with a history of mental illness do not receive mental health treatment while incarcerated in state and federal prisons. And whereas, individuals in rural communities often face unique challenges when receiving and managing their mental health care. And rural Americans may travel two times as far to their nearest hospital or provider to receive treatment. And rural individuals are two times more likely to have limited access to broadband internet, limited access to virtual care and are more likely to reside in a mental health professional shortage area where there are too few providers to meet the mental health demands. And whereas, greater public awareness, education and civic activities in our communities can address the challenges facing people with mental illness and can support and power and assist in improving the lives of individuals, families and communities affected by mental illness. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the, the Lycum County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May of twenty twenty-five as Mental Health Awareness Month throughout Lycum County to increase public awareness of the importance of mental health and promote the identification and treatment of mental illness. Signed, Lycum County Commissioner Scott Almetzker, Chairman, Mark C. Sortman, Vice Chairman and Mark Messina, Secretary.
Jess Miller?
Yeah.
Yes.
What do I?
You'll cut it off. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah. Thanks.
It's just as exciting as you expect.
Yeah, okay. On behalf of the Board of Directors of NAMI North Central PA, I would like to thank the Lycum County Commissioners for proclaiming May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Uh, with your support, we here at NAMI can continue our, our mission in providing advocacy, education, resources and peer support for those who are affected by mental health. Uh, by reducing the stigma, we can remove the isolation for those who struggle and create a community of help, awareness, acceptance and support. In twenty twenty-four, twenty-two Lycum County residents died via suicide. Suicide rates among people living in rural areas are sixty-four percent higher than those in urban areas. Yet we typically have twenty percent fewer primary care physicians and a significantly more surge in of, uh, mental health programs and providers. Um, I could actually go on and on about how we are at a, at a disadvantage. But the, the real question is, how do we help each other? Right? So, the ask is, you know, recognize mental health as you recognize physical health. Normalize conversations about mental illness. Talk openly about lived experience with your mental health challenges. Ask those who are struggling, how can I help? They're probably not going to be able to tell you how they're going to help, but just asking is the help, right? Um, encourage them to reach out, encourage them to fight the stigma, encourage them to stay the course, persevere and remind them that when they come through on the other side, that they can help others too. At NAMI, um, we're trying to help, right, by providing, we provide support groups for survivors of suicide. Peer support groups for those suffering with mental illness and also, um, we, we just started a, uh, support group for mental health professionals, um, who serve people's mental health, right? It's exhausting. Um, so we've reached, we also recently reestablished our quarterly suicide prevention committee um, with local stakeholders and we're developing a collaborating task force. Uh, and we are active in the community by providing resources and education. We've done presentations and trainings in the past year in workplaces, parks, whanas, rotary club, clubs, school groups. Um, we've recommitted to reestablishing our connections with the community that still call on us, collaborate with us or join us or volunteer. With that being said, you know, volunteer agencies can only do so much. We're only a little piece of the puzzle. Professional, mental health services and programs are essential to providing treatment for those with mental health illnesses. Strong mental health programs impact not just the individual or their families, but also our communities and our society. By providing programs for mental health, we are building a more productive, confident, viable community. So this collaboration with the Lycum County Commissioners and their awareness only strengthens the programs we can provide and we appreciate your ongoing support.
Jess. We see that, we can hear the numbers of how alarming they are. We know they've got worse after COVID. And we just asked that, as Jess shared with us here today, that you reach out and you see someone that just doesn't seem to be themselves. You know, ask them if they're okay. Talk to them and, and, uh, try to get them to open up with you. Just listen. The important thing is just listen. Don't judge. Don't put a stigma out there, but just listen because all of us go through stress. We go through challenging times in our lives. I shared this story before. I'm a very, I've known several people that have taken their lives and one of my closest friends growing up did. He was very successful. But things just didn't go right for a period of about a year. And, uh, he started to experience depression. And, um, a year after his death, they had a service at this gravesite. And the pastor was there and the friends and the family and the pastor had shared. I want you to look down over the hill there at all those beautiful homes. How beautiful those homes are on the outside. But we don't know what's going on in the inside of those. And often, don't know what's going on inside somebody's thoughts. So, take the time. Just don't brush it off. Cause that's an end result that you can't change. And we want those people with us. Everybody has value. And, uh, we want to show them that we truly care. And it just takes a moment to listen. So please do so. If you see someone that you know is just not themselves, so critical. Doesn't cost anything to sit down and listen. Be there for some people.
Well, um, I, I think we've come a long way. I think you'd agree in, in societally, we still have a long way to go, but, what makes it so challenging, it's one thing to say that we have to, you know, be better with mental health, but as this, we've talked about, it's, it's so much harder to diagnose than, you know, you can't just, you know, put a thermometer to your forehead and say that you're sick and, and for, uh, the parts of, you know, we've all had colds, we've all had fevers, we've all had stomach bugs and we can relate to that. So, so when someone's sick, we were like, I know what that's going, what they're going through because that happened to me. Uh, with, with some of these things that, there's a portion of society that can't relate. So that also makes it a, a challenge and, um, but we're doing better. I think our, this generation is better than the previous generation and hopefully our kids going forward, um, just continue to, um, become more knowledgeable and, and it becomes more acceptable to ask for help. And there, there are things that we didn't understand. Like I, I had a friend tell me once, you know, it's not, it's like illnesses come and go and mental health, you know, illnesses come and go. It's not, you know, some illnesses you have, like if someone's diabetic, they're going to be diabetic for their whole life. If you have a fever, you're not going to have a fever for your whole life. And there are, um, there are, are more advanced ones, but there, you know, someone that's suicidal isn't suicidal their whole life. They can, so that, that when you look at it that way, that it is, um, an illness, it really is an illness. In times, it's not necessarily a disease, but an illness that is recoverable from. And then once, you know, just like everyone else, once, you know, we're not vomiting anymore, then we go back to normal and, and, um, these are things that, uh, that I, I, I think we're learning more and more every day. Like I said, our, our society is better. Um, we still have ways to go, but we're on the right path. Uh, I know when they talked about, one of the things that I was happy about was where they said in the jails, uh, in the proclamation where they talked about state and federal, I've really been impressed with, um, what we try to do here at the county, at the prison with mental health and with, um, the medications for, for the people that are there. And, um, you know, we, we, you're right, we're, we're trying, um, we've done well, we, we still have a ways to go, but at least society has embraced it and realized the value of, of taking care of mental health just as much as physical.
You know, I, I think the, the challenging part with, with the mental health issue is those of us that don't have a mental health issue. We, we, we struggle to understand it. So I took my mother, uh, Mother's Day out for a little convertible ride and we got into the conversation because we just had one of our relatives' sons commit suicide at nineteen years old. And, you know, we both, both had the statement in our own heads of, we just don't understand why. Because neither one of us in our lifetime, my mother's eighty-nine years old, neither one of us in our lifetimes have ever looked at that as a solution. So you, we, we don't understand what goes through somebody's mind when they, they make that choice. Uh, and I think that's the hardest part about it, you know, as, as Commissioner Messina said, it's, it's not, we can see that they have a cold. So we know what's wrong with them. Uh, so it's, it's very hard to, to understand, you, you know, we, you, you still don't understand, uh, when you have a, when you have a relative that does it and you sit back and you ask yourself the question, why, why? Why did they make that decision? Their life seemed to be good to all of us on the outside. And I think that's the other hard part for the rest of us to acknowledge. Because in so many ways, it's covered up by the person with the mental disease. They, they don't, they don't share that with the rest of us. So I think it goes back to, you know, the statements that Jess made and Commissioner, uh, Metzger made, it's, it's asked the question, how are you doing? You know, maybe you'll get the answer, maybe you won't, but at least maybe they'll feel somebody cares that they have the opportunity to talk to. Cause you wonder why a nineteen-year-old doesn't feel they have someone they can talk to. So, and as, you know, Commissioner Messina said, I think we're getting much better at it and addressing that at different levels. And hopefully that as, as time goes on, that makes a difference. That's a very difficult disease.
Jess would like to give you the proclamation. You can picture it's okay. Great, thank you. I think it was about maybe a year and a half ago, we had a gentleman over at the Community Arts Theater that, that jumped off the Golden Gate Bridge and survived. Kevin Heine, and what a powerful worry.
The minute he jumped, he regressed.
Yep, the minute he jumped, he regained, he survived and, and now he goes around the nation and talks about his experience. Helping others. Okay, the next proclamation we have, we have two that have to do with the emergency medical services. The first will be for the, uh, emergency, emergency medical services and then the second will be emergency medical services for children. So this is EMS week. Next week is actually, uh, May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth. Slogan is, we care, we care for everyone. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas, the men, members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access, quality, mercy, care dramatically improves the survival recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, emergency medical services fill the healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care and access to telemedicine. And whereas, the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators and administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians and trained members of the public and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. Whereas, the members of emergency medical service teams, whether they're a career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Whereas, it's appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical providers by designating the Emergency Medical Service Week. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the Commissioners of Lycum County and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, twenty-five as Emergency Medical Service Week. The fifty-first anniversary of EMS theme week is we care for everyone. We encourage the community to observe this week the appropriate programs, ceremonies, activities in honor of the EMS profession, essential service it provides. Signed this date, Lycum County Commissioner Scott Almetzker, Presortment and Mark Messina. Hutch?
Actually, I prefer William.
William?
Uh, actually, if you want to read the other proclamation and then I'll speak on both.
All right, we'll do that. Thank you.
Okay, I have the honor to, uh, read the proclamation for the Emergency Medical Services for Children. So whereas, thirty-five million children receive emergency medical care each year due to illness or injury. And whereas, the need of children are different than the needs of adults in medical emergencies. Whereas, the goal of Emergency Medical Services for Children is to help states and communities prepare for the emergency involving a child by helping emergency medical services, your EMS agencies and emergency departments become pediatric-ready. And whereas, the Emergency Medical Services for Children's Program supports research and improvement science to drive transformation of emergency care systems, including the pre-hospital setting. And whereas, Emergency Medical Services for Children relies on its established partners within the EMS community as well as multidisciplinary teams of providers across the emergency care continuum. Help states and communities reduce child and youth disability and death due to severe illness or injury. And whereas, Emergency Medical Services for Children, the hundreds of thousands of pre-hospital and hospital-based clinicals it serves, the professional organizations and federal agencies in which it partners and the patients and the family it engages are committed to collaborating to ensure high-quality emergency care for children. And whereas, it is proper and timely to bring recognition to the value and accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services for Children, the dedicated personnel who work timelessly to improve the delivery of pediatric care across emergency care systems. Therefore, it be resolved that we, the Commissioners of Lycum County and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through twenty-fourth, Emergency Medical Services for Children's EMSC Day. As part of the National EMSC Week, we urge all citizens and healthcare professionals serving the pediatric population to celebrate EMS Weeks twenty twenty-five, the theme of we care for everyone. Become familiar with the support and participate in the educational and outreach programs to increase their knowledge of the best practices in pediatric medical care. Signed, Lycum County Commissioners, Scott Almetzker, Chairman, Mark C. Sortman, Vice Chair and Mark Messina, Secretary.
Morning Bill.
Morning Commissioners. First off, thank you for both proclamations. Um, although it's only one week, uh, EMS week, you know, is extremely important to recognize our, uh, pre-hospital providers and our hospital, uh, providers as well. Um, here at LTS, you know, we have about seventy-eight agencies that we cover in the three counties. Um, about eight hundred pre-hospital providers and nine, or I'm sorry, six hospitals in the, in our region. So, um, you know, with that, you know, the volunteerism is continuing to decrease and dwindle. Um, so appreciation weeks like this are very important to our pre-hospital providers. Um, but we continue to put out, uh, programs for, um, pre-hospital providers. Uh, we do an EMT and an EMR class that we, uh, have the assisting funding from the Commissioners' Office to help offset that cost. Um, and we're really pushing for that and getting providers out on the street. In fact, last week, we just, or I'm sorry, earlier this week, we had, um, testing for EMT and, uh, we had eighteen providers there and out of those eighteen, sixteen have already become certified. So, um, uh, you know, it's, it's programs like this and the funding that you guys help with that, uh, you know, we can continue to put providers on the street. Um, as for EMS for children, we, our day, um, if we didn't recognize our children, we didn't care for their health, you know, um, what for future would we all have? So, um, in our region, there is about, uh, two dozen agencies that specialize, uh, um, in the EMS for children, uh, that it's an actual above and beyond certification the state offers, um, which just means that they do additional pediatric training. Um, they carry the above and beyond pediatric equipment to specialize for our, our young children. So, um, and with that, again, Commissioners, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Typically, you know that during EMS week, we do the awards and everything. We are pushing that back to later in the year. So, uh, we will be over when those awards are, are ready.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
We want to thank each one of the ones in the EMS field. It's a very tough profession. I stress. Start with the nine-one-one call. Remember when your dispatcher's actually delivering a baby during, it's a blizzard on the phone. It was twins, I believe.
Yes, yep.
Which was amazing. And we hear about those stories on TV and we have one locally here. And, uh, you know, it's, uh, the work that, uh, that they do plus the trauma they see. And, uh, you know, it's, it's important that, again, you talk to those professionals because they're seeing trauma. That eats at them. That internalizes it. So it's so important to, are you okay? Have those conversations. With the kids and the pediatrics, I, I experienced that personally. My son, uh, we had a local doctor who's just retired, phenomenal doctor, pediatric doctor. And his birth, didn't pass it off. Thought he heard something wrong. Discovered a heart issue, which was extremely serious. Ended up in Hershey, heart surgery. And today that young man is now thirty-two and has three kids of his own. It's through the EMS doctors and professionals that got us through that trying time in our lives. Forever grateful for them for what they did and what they do for families every day. And we're blessed with great hospitals in the region. Bexeter, UPMC, not too far away, Hershey, EVAN. What they do for, for the kids and for their patients. But it starts with that nine-one-one call often. So thank you for each one of those professionals, whether they're volunteer or whether they're paid. They're so needed. Thank you.
You know, I, I would, I would just add to that. I mean, the EMS folks, the nine-eleven folks, um, it, it's a special person that's willing to do that job. And I understand, you know, why is that decreasing now? Because it is, it is, the volunteers are decreasing because it is a very difficult job. I mean, your, your entire day, your life revolves around tragedy, death. Um, sometimes you don't get to see the good side of it after you've done your job because, you know, those people move on and, and, you know, it's nice that, uh, Commissioner Metzger can tell a good side of a story as well. Uh, but you guys, a lot of times don't hear that side of it. So it's, it's great that, that we do have people in this world that are willing to commit to that. Um, and I think that, uh, EMS, um, and the tragedies one way or another, we either have our own personal story um, or we can just look at our own community where currently we, we have a missing child, you know, in our river. Uh, those are hard things that you, that you guys see the real front, the rest of us read in the newspaper, we see it on the news. It's, it's not as close to our hearts as it is to all of you. Uh, so we appreciate what, what, uh, your program does for our community. Cause without, without people like you that give your time to those tragedies of other people, um, our society would not be the same. Thank you.
Yeah, we often throw, we over-accolade things sometimes and, uh, whenever you're dealing with something that has emerged Whenever you're dealing with something that has emergency in the title, that, you know, we're all good at things when we can schedule it and on our time and when we're in the right frame of mind. But the, the ability to, you know, to go at a moment's notice and not just go at a moment's notice, but what you're going to deal with. You know, no matter what you're going through and, you know, you've kind of got to drop everything and go and it is oftentimes life and death, the, the, the way you handle it, the situation, the decisions that you make. You know, it's probably not overblowing it to say that your role in the process is, it's almost angelic. When you think of what you do and the lives that you save and, and. It is to anyone, to all the, to all the people that were mentioned in it, the firefighters and the, and the police force and, and to anyone who has to, you know. You go when duty calls, not when you feel like it, not when you schedule the appointment or not. It is a very special, these are very special people, but your role in emergency medicine that, that literally saves lives. On a, on a daily basis is, you know, where would we be without you? So we, we thank you for all that you do. Yeah, everyone, everyone in society thanks you for all that you do.
I'd like to present the proclamations to you for picture. Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports, Nikki.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Presented for your ratification are invoices due from May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, to be paid on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. In the amount of one million, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. That's ninety-two point four-three out of the general fund and seven point five-seven out of R.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the council's payment? I will make that motion.
One second.
Any questions or comments? You're now all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Information. I know it's Mike.
Yeah, good morning. Three point one, elected officials, personnel actions. In the Controller's Office, Noah Hunt, accountant, one, pay grade nine, full-time, forty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-one cents per year. Seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date, May twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. And then in the District Attorney's Office, Zoe Stoffenberg, Adult Victim Witness Coordinator, this is a grant position. Full-time at eighteen dollars and fifty cents per hour, seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date, May twenty-five, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning again.
Morning.
Just an informational item here. DPS is excited to announce that we're rolling out our, our new public warning system, code red by OnSol. We've been without a system for a number of years after we deemed the old one is inadequate. This will be for any severe weather warning, emergency evacuations, major road closures, public health notification. Or other critical safety message that we want to send out to our county residents and visitors. We strongly encourage, we've, we've sent it out via the media channels, we've just hit social media this morning. Encourage all Lycoming County residents and businesses to register. You, you can choose how you sign up, text, phone call, email. Additionally, what National Weather Services announcements you want to receive. So we're really excited about this. If I could say anything to those in the room is. Just please sign up, get everybody you know in the county to sign up. And then just for those that might not know, a lot of agencies use this just for public warning here within the county. To get the biggest bang for our buck to say, we're going to use this as an employee notification tool. We've designed it where we can drill down by county department or county facility across all of our properties. So we can send a system-wide employee notification, or we can drill it down to just, just the Controller's Office, just the Commissioner's Office, or just Third Street Plaza, or just the Lysoc Building. And with that, we've also engaged our, our tenant joiner. We're treating them just like a, just like a regular county department since we're still here, finding they're here in our building. So really excited about it. The one thing I'd say, if you just, everybody you know can get signed up, that'd be great. If you have any questions, thank you.
At this time, we'll recess our Commissioners' Public Meeting for the Salary Board, we need the Salary Board at this time. Nikki.
Good morning.
Morning.
And the first item I have is vote to approve the Salary Board minutes for the May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting day.
I will make the motion. Your second.
Second.
On your side.
Aye.
Aye.
Then vote to approve the following Salary Board actions. In planning and community development, delete one clerk for position from the TDA.
And motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. On your side.
Aye.
Aye.
And reclassify the administrative coordinator position, pay grade six, to be on exam.
Motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. On your side.
Aye.
Aye.
At RMS, delete one full-time equipment operator position from the TDA.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. On your side.
Aye.
Aye.
And then add two part-time equipment operator positions to the TDA.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. On your side.
Aye.
Aye.
At DPS, add one part-time telecommunicator to position, pay grade eight, to the TDA.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. On your side.
Aye.
Aye.
In the Controller's Office, delete one part-time accountant position from the TDA.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All favors side.
Aye. Take, take one full-time accountant, one position off hold.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second. On your side.
Aye. And then reclassify the full-time accountant, one position to a pay grade nine. That's actually a decrease.
And it was previously?
A ten.
A ten.
Yeah. And our count two is a ten, so.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Off your side.
Aye. We use that and just, yeah, just a quick question, Nikki. So I appreciate that you, you lowered the pay grade to a nine. What does it take for your accountant to be able to move to a pay, to an accountant two? What's?
More experience.
Just more experience.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so he does have a path?
Yes, yeah, we do.
Or, you know, because be very honest and I appreciate, you know, that he's new and he's just coming out of college, but. Not a huge salary. So I appreciate that he's willing to come to work for us at that to get, get some learning and, but, but I think we also have to have a path forward for our county employees.
Right.
That they don't leave us after they get the training. So I just want to clarify that.
And accounts are very hard to find these days.
Yes.
In every profession, so it's good that he's willing to come and work with us.
Yeah.
Hopefully he'll stay.
I hope so.
So be nice to him.
Be nice to him.
We have a motion in a second, all fair side.
Aye.
Gary got cut off.
Okay.
At this time, we'll adjourn the Salary Board and we convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting. There's no actions, Mike.
Yep, good morning.
Good morning.
Approve the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment. Subject to successful completion of background check and all other employment conditions as outlined here in attachment A. Public Safety, nine-eleven center, Alexander Hafner, telecommunicator two, pay grade eight, part-time. Twenty-two dollars, point five-six-one cents per hour, not to exceed one thousand hours annually, with anticipated transfer date, June eighth, twenty twenty-five. In Resource Management, Michael Porman, Equipment Operator, Pay Grade Six, Part-Time. Eighteen dollars per hour, not to exceed one thousand hours annually, anticipated start date, May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Also in Resource Management, David Cotner, Equipment Operator, Pay Grade Six, Part-Time. Nineteen dollars, sixty-two cents per hour, not to exceed one thousand hours annually, anticipated start date, May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. And then in JPO, Matthew Minier, Acting Chief, Juvenile Probation Officer, Pay Grade Eleven, Full-Time. That's at eighty-five thousand, seven hundred sixty-four dollars, point five-zero-four cents, seventy-five hours per pay period. With an adjustment date of May eleven, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to accept personnel actions? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Uh, yes, it's time we'll adjourn for a second session. Okay. Recommit the Commissioners' Public Meeting at this time. Now, we had adjourned for a separate session. There was a question on one of the, under personal actions regarding one of the decisions. So, and the question was answered, so. So we have a motion on second floor, that we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mike?
All right. Action items, item six point one, Gary.
Yeah, hi, good morning.
Morning Gary, how are you doing?
Good. Item six point one is vote to approve the agreement with Cummins Power Systems. So that is basically a company we use for the very few. Truck tractors we have that have the Cummins power engine in them. And it's not as needed basis.
Okay, uh, motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. It is, it is in your twenty twenty-five approved budget?
Yes.
On your fair side?
Aye.
Uh, action item six point two, Gary.
Yeah, uh, six point two is vote to approve the amendment to the agreement with PetroChoice. So PetroChoice is the outfit we use for a lot of our, all of our greases, our, our oil and lubrication stuff for the equipment here. And this is just an extension. It's going back out to bid at the end of the month. So that's what that is.
Again, it's in your twenty twenty-five approved budget.
Yep.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second, all fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
And Gary, six point three.
All right, this is a vote to approve the net energy metering rider application for services. So this is like the first little step on, on some changes we got to make with some of the generators working with Nextera. To reroute the, the power that they're producing and sending it to a different location. It's just for an application that, that we need to get started and get moving.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second, all fair side.
Aye.
Thank you.
Kelsey, good morning, six point four through six point six.
Good morning Commissioners. So six point four is a vote to approve the sub-recipient agreement with West French Regional Authority for twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety cents. That is budgeted and it's a half implementation project.
Thank you, Kelsey. And it's a twenty twenty-five approved budgeted item, so is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Six point five is a vote to approve change order number one with Shiloh Excavating in the amount of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, or five hundred and sixty-one. And this is for the second phase of the Lebby Cross Pipes. It will still be within the budget for the EDA grant. And it's just due to a change of material that's needed for some of those cross pipes.
Okay, that's on, on schedule?
So at this time, and due to some ordering delays and things like that, we're not sure when we are going to be able to start.
Okay. Mike's been released?
So the BABA waiver has not come through yet for phase one. I will talk to you guys more about it.
Okay, all right, thank you, Kelsey. Um, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
And then six point six is a vote to approve change order one with GPI. They are the construction oversight firm for the EDA Cross Pipes. It's a no-cost, no-time change order that just allows them to move kind of the line items around to different amounts. To account for them having to do additional work they weren't expecting prior to construction beginning.
Thank you, Kelsey. That's twenty twenty-five budgeted item approved and is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. On your side.
Aye.
Hey. Thank you, Kelsey. Any comments? Don't want to have anything?
Um, I really don't have anything major. I, I, I kind of wanted to make a, a quick comment. I, you know, when we talk about. The three proclamations we made today, they're kind of on a, on a negative undertone. That the positive side of it is I think all our, all of our communities are improving in, in the way we approach a lot of the stuff, but. So I like to also just say, you know, it, it springs in, springs here, summer's coming. Yeah, it's raining, but the, the, the trees are turning green, the grass is turning green, things are starting to get some color, so. Just kind of want to end that on a, on a positive note.
Uh, next Tuesday is the primary day. And I'll just ask that everybody get out, exercise your right to vote. It's important, don't think this is just a light year. Every one of those offices that are on those ballots are very important. ranging from the judges, right down to the local school boards, tax collectors, they're all very important. And so please get out and exercise your right to vote.
I agree. It's where we, one of the advantages of where we live is we don't have to stand in line for very long and we, and. You know, Scott's right. It doesn't, it doesn't seem like a big election year. But for the amount of effort that it, it takes most of us to go vote, you know, just go vote.
Yeah, I don't think it's an off-year.
Yes.
I mean, never an off-year.
Yeah, it's, some are, some are more important than others, but they're all important. So.
Absolutely.
And another great thing about our community, we even, when we did the, the Real ID conversation the other day down at the airport. And the gentleman was here from, from Pennsylvania State. And he, he called down to our DMV location and wanted to know what the wait time was. Because coming out of Harrisburg, he's used to wait times being an hour, two hours. DMV location and wanted to know what the wait time was, because coming out of Harrisburg, he's used to wait times being an hour, two hours, three hours, especially with this Real ID going on. Ours was six minutes. So, uh, to, to Mark's point, you know, it doesn't take a lot of time to get out and vote, because there's, we, we live in a community where there's not huge lines and, and we're, we're fortunate to be able to get in and take care of it.
Hey. Anything for the audience? Any online?
I have some online, uh, from, uh, Liko Secrets. Hello, county commissioners, I have public comments on the proclamation of the mental health awareness. Uh, NAMI doesn't oppose involuntary commitment, which can cause significant patient encumbrances with medical debt, trauma, and even poorer mental health for the consumer. Post-commitment, I know from personal experience, it's okay to have been civilly committed, your life doesn't end, and there is hope. However, NAMI doesn't support ending the practice. There are plenty of other good mental health charities which solicit donations respectfully. I donate to them before I donate to NAMI NCPA. Thanks. Um, also from Liko Secrets, do the commissioners have a comment on what occurred at the Project Blue Whale meeting in January, twenty twenty-five with Famvest? Any official county business, question mark? Thanks. And then Thomas Adams, uh, statements and behaviors as such a person, those incidents being a part of daily life of everyone involved, family or neighbors or coworkers, are not enough to have someone, uh, committed involuntarily is a travesty. This creates a heightened atmosphere of distress and mental anguish, creating a greater probability of a serious violent criminal activity than when an actual crime is committed. Uh, the individual can be involuntarily held after unnecessarily increased damage and harm, which creates an ever-growing challenge to heal from those incidents, living the memories of all involved, especially knowing the experience could have been completely avoided from the beginning. If common sense and decency and real care and concern were part of our legal system, uh, abandoning traditional American values based on God's, on America's godly Christian heritage leads us into a world of danger and darkness. Thank you for your dedication and work to our county. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
I, I. Mr. Spomper, you playing a comment? Yeah, the, the.
Before you make the comment, can you clarify what, what was the question about Famvest with the meeting?
Uh, a Project Blue Whale meeting in January of twenty twenty-five with Famvest.
I was just gonna say, that was a whole mall project. Is, you know, we, we were updated again this week. I know it's because these things are slow and because, and, and you keep hearing people say it's progressing, it's progressing. We did get another update this week and it is progressing. And that's really all we can say right now. And I know there's people that are probably think that, you know, that they trust, oh, that's all they ever say, like, I, I don't know what else to say. We, we got an update. It was a positive update and we can't really say a whole lot more right now other than that.
A positive update, that's all we can release at this time.
What, what I, what I would add to that, um, as a previous Lowstock Township supervisor that probably, I've been here, what, sixteen months, seventeen months now, so, uh, somewhere in the twenty-four to thirty-six month range approved a housing project that currently has three houses built. These projects take a long time. I, I, I think unfortunately what's happened is the district, they got some signs up, they got some motivation going, and everybody expects everything to be done in a day. It doesn't happen that way. Um, so there is progress, there will be continued progress, just as in Lowstock Township on the housing development, there's continued progress. But nothing happens overnight. Takes a long time for land development. It takes a long time for new roadways, it takes a long time for tenants to sign leases, goes through a full legal team. So I, I, and I just got to say to everybody, just be patient, be patient and things will happen. Uh, there's no developer that buys a piece of land that wants it to sit. But it takes time.
Does take time. Okay, um, anything else, anything?
No further comment.
Okay, no further comment. Okay, thank you. And thank you for those comments. Thank you for attending, uh, either in-person the meetings or virtual. We appreciate it. We've completed our agenda, so we will be adjourned but Thursday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, right here in this meeting room. Thank you, everybody. Have a good day.